Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, April 22, 2021, at 5:39 PM. A quorum of the board, along with a limited number of our staff members, are physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. In addition, we have a majority of our staff joining us by video. We are following necessary health protocols to ensure the safety of those who are here in person, but please keep in mind we are continuing to comply with local health orders and CDC guidance, and so we're not yet able to open our meetings to in-person attendance by our full staff and the community. We will continue to use the virtual platform until it is safe to do otherwise. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Grande, and Google Fiber TV, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for the hearing impaired and to our audience tuning in remotely. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Anderson to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Texas Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to our game changers items, which is our opportunity to recognize and observe important items happening in AISD and our nation. Dr. Elizalde, would you please introduce our first item?
Thank you, President Rodriguez, members of the board. April is World Autism Month. This month, Austin ISD is recommitting ourselves to providing our students with access to excellent, evidence-based instruction and services. We are committed to rethinking how we include our students in all areas of the school community to ensure students with autism experience impactful instruction and interventions. This 2021 theme is "Celebrate Differences." #CelebrateDifferences is an initiative of the Autism Society, which focuses on providing information and resources for communities to become more aware of autism, promote acceptance, and be more inclusive in everyday life. Our campuses are also taking part in an autism awareness campaign for our community. One item I would like to highlight is the professional learning workshop taking place tomorrow. Teachers will learn more about providing behavioral supports for students with autism. Thank you to our teachers, administrators, and our families for supporting our students with autism each and every day.
Thank you, Dr. Elizalde. Our next item is a recognition of after-school professionals' appreciation.
At Austin ISD, about 22,000 students enjoy after-school programs annually. Even during the pandemic, Austin ISD has been offering after-school programs at more than 100 Austin schools through partnerships with the City of Austin, 21st Century Community Learning Center grants, nonprofit community organizations, private foundations, and more than 200 volunteers. The City of Austin and Austin ISD have worked together on after-school programming for more than 35 years. The city provides funding, and our student support services manages it. Schools enjoy flexibility in designing out-of-school programs that engage kids in a safe, supervised environment. Be sure to thank your teachers, staff, and outside partners who offer these great programs for students.
Dr. Elizalde, I think our next recognition is around school librarians.
As you may recall from our information session, April is School Library Month, a time designated to show our gratitude and appreciation for the valuable and inspiring work our school librarians do throughout the entire year, and not just this school year. The other day, we were visiting different schools to surprise the finalists of Teachers of the Year, and every event was in the library. And every time I walked into the library, within five minutes, the librarian had briefed me on everything going on at the school. They, of course, help students with their research and studies by finding the right thing to read, and get kids interested in reading by creating fun events like author visits. Some schools even have little free libraries. They also help teachers with technology, which is especially critical now, and with professional development by providing resources. And to make sure everyone has access to the books, we've got Buford the Book Bus, which delivers free books during the summer to students who have few books in the home or live across busy streets from the closest library. I would also like to share a few pictures. There we go. Sent to us by Lee Elementary Librarian Jenny Day of some of our AISD story strolls, which encourage reading by posting up large portions of books outside of schools, allowing students and families to walk, social distance, and enjoy a good book. It's a beautiful gallery. Thank you to all our librarians for all they do for every child, every day.
Thank you, Dr. Elizalde. The next recognition is the Austin ISD Earth Week.
Happy Earth Day! Austin ISD embraces sustainability as a way to help our planet and as an educational tool to teach our kids. In 2011, our Board of Trustees passed the Environmental Sustainability Policy, formalizing our commitment to responsible stewardship of energy, water, and other natural resources, create healthy environments for teaching and learning, support sustainability as an economic, environmental, and social priority to be taught and practiced throughout the entire district. That's why we're especially excited to celebrate Earth Week. We encourage families, students, teachers, and staff to check out our Earth Week website at austinisd.org/earthweek for fun and meaningful ways to take action. I also take great pleasure in recognizing the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Committee and Austin ISD Sustainability Leadership Team members, who work very hard every day to make our district and community a more sustainable place. And a note of thanks to Becker Elementary School and Food Services for the beautiful flower arrangement in recognition of Earth Day. Thank you.
Dr. Elizalde, I think we have two more important recognitions, and the next one is the National Arab American Heritage Month.
April is also National Arab American Heritage Month. In Austin ISD, Arab American heritage is an important part of the rich cultural diversity of our students, families, and staff all year long. Austin ISD does not keep data on the number of students and staff who identify as Arab American, but there's no question that Arabic is a part of the fabric of cultures and languages that enrich us. In fact, about 500 Austin ISD students identify Arabic as their home language. In addition, Arabic is one of the 11 world languages offered in our district. In addition to April being National Arab American Heritage Month, the holy month of Ramadan began last week. During this time, Muslims worldwide fast from sunrise to sunset. It is considered a time of spiritual reflection, self-improvement, and heightened devotion and worship. I would like to recognize Trustee Yasmeen Wagner to also share a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Elizalde. And I think tonight, in listening to all of the recognitions that we have, it just makes me reflect and realize how much richness of diversity that we have in our district and the sense of pride I feel in seeing our district recognize all of the different groups of students and backgrounds and experiences that they bring to our community. And as an Arab American, it's particularly meaningful for me that this is the third year in a row that we've recognized Arab American Heritage Month. I really appreciate the district uplifting our community's shared heritage and recognizing that, being able to honor the culture and diversity within the Arab American community, and also to have an opportunity to educate our community on the lived experiences and history of Arab Americans, since there are so many stereotypes that we still need to dispel about Arab Americans in the United States. And I also wanted to wish Ramadan Kareem to all of those in the Arab American community and outside of that community as well who celebrate. So, thank you.
Dr. Elizalde, we have another recognition, which is the AISD Pride Week.
This week is also Pride Week at Austin ISD, our time to highlight our commitment to creating a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment for LGBTQ+ students and staff. This week, we have held community and staff pride circles, as well as a session for families on the importance of being an ally. AISD staff are also invited to participate in an LGBTQ+ 101 learning opportunity through our Human Capital Platform. Students can participate in activities that align with our vision to be Austin's home for inclusive learning, as well as in Friday's Annual Student-Led Day of Silence, a national youth movement highlighting the silencing and erasure of LGBTQ+ people at school. This Saturday, April 24, everyone is invited to a virtual Pride Week conference where we can continue to celebrate, inform, and inspire, knowing that all means all at Austin ISD.
Dr. Elizalde, could you provide tonight's partner recognition for our vaccine and testing partners?
Yes, thank you. Let me tell you a story about a woman named Sharon Cohen. She calls herself "Just a Mom" who founded Vax Together Austin, a nonprofit to get vaccinations to people she felt were left out of the initial rollout, be it elderly, blind, or vision impaired community members who have trouble with online registrations and drive-through vaccinations. Through a friend, she got connected to Walgreens Regional Manager. Through this relationship, she became a vaccine scheduler for two Walgreens locations. A week ago, she got a last-minute call from Walgreens. They had an extra 1,000 doses that needed to be administered right away. She reached out to AISD, and within a couple of days, she and Walgreens stood up a vaccination pop-up at our own Navarro Early College High School under the leadership of Principal Stephen Koven for teens and their parents. Navarro students got the word out because there was little time to do any mass communication about the event. Next up, she's working on vaccination clinics for Eastside Memorial International School and Travis. In May, she plans to do clinics for Austin ISD custodians, transportation, and food service workers that may not yet have taken advantage of the opportunities available. As a side note, she said that Walgreens has not asked for any credit whatsoever, no logos on flyers or T-shirts. Walgreens only wants to get jabs in the arms. Pretty awesome for a company to reach out and to react that way. At this time, I would like to ask Michelle Wallace to share our partner recognition. Ms. Wallace?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Elizalde, President Rodriguez, and trustees. I'm here tonight to ask for formal recognition of Ascension Seaton, Austin Public Health, Code 4, Community Care, UFCU, Walgreens, and HEB. These partners have provided the Austin ISD community with over 8,200 COVID-19 vaccination opportunities for AISD staff, with opportunities for students beginning this weekend. And Ascension Seaton Health Services staff have administered over 8,800 rapid COVID tests across the district. Special thanks to our friends from Ascension Seaton Austin Public Health, Code 4, Community Care, UFCU, Walgreens, and HEB who are tuning in tonight. I wanted to also mention that AISD families received information today via email about additional vaccine clinics available this weekend for students, staff, and families ages 16 and over. Families can check their inboxes for an email from AISD or email health@austinisd.org for more information. Trustees, it's my pleasure to request formal recognition for our vaccination and testing partners at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Trustee Lugo, do you have a recognition statement to share?
Yes, I do. On behalf of the Austin ISD Board of Trustees, it is my honor to recognize community partners that have supported our students and staff by providing testing and vaccination during the COVID-19 pandemic. We recognize Ascension Seaton, Austin Public Health, Code 4, Community Care, UFCU, Walgreens, and HEB Pharmacy for providing vaccination opportunities for Austin ISD staff. Thanks to our partners, as of April 2, 2021, over 8,000 COVID-19 vaccination opportunities have been provided to Austin ISD staff. In addition to vaccination efforts, our COVID-19 testing efforts have also contributed to making our schools safer. Therefore, we also want to recognize Ascension Seaton Health Services staff serving in Austin ISD schools and the campus health rooms for going above and beyond to meet the needs of our students and staff by administering rapid COVID-19 tests across the district in collaboration with Austin ISD's Department of Health Services. Over 8,200 COVID-19 rapid tests have been administered to students and staff since November 2020. These partnerships focused on the health and safety of our Austin ISD community are to be commended. It is with great pride that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District recognizes and thanks our partners for their support.
Thank you very much, trustees.
Thank you. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't also recognize Judge Brown and Travis County for their efforts around the Central Texas Vaccine Collaborative. There's a lot of folks that don't know that they're behind the scenes, the leaders in the mass vaccination efforts at Circuit of the Americas, which some of our colleagues have taken advantage of over that time period, and a number of our trustees have volunteered at. So, thank you, Michelle. The next item on our agenda is under the President's Report. And tonight, I'd like to provide an update on upcoming work with the board and share some thoughts from a recent event trustees took part in with Dr. Bruce Perry. As we've shared in previous updates, the board has been working with an outside consultant from the Council of Great City Schools to discuss governance issues. Our goal is to ensure the board is focused on improving student outcomes and ensuring our board meetings are aligned to this goal. At our upcoming retreat, we will discuss how the board will conduct its own self-evaluation, our procedures and policies around meetings and agendas, and how scorecard goals are both reported and monitored. During the May 13 Board Information Session, we will provide greater information on changes to the agenda-setting process, board meetings, and changes to how we monitor and discuss student outcomes. This will include a discussion of our policy BE Local. We look forward to sharing We look forward to sharing these governance changes with the community and listening to any feedback or thoughts on how we can best stay focused on students and student outcomes. You know, last week, Dr. Bruce Perry, a renowned neuroscientist who recently finished a new book with Oprah, shared information on the concept of resilience, or the capacity to tolerate stressors and maintain functions. We all need to be listening to our children and students to ask, how are they doing? The collective trauma of the past year has elevated the importance of the work we have done in Austin to implement social and emotional learning in our schools. Because we believe that a student's social, emotional, and mental health is the foundation for academic learning, and this will be more critical this year more than ever. Dr. Perry has a gift for presenting brain science in a very understandable and actionable way. And I encourage the community to attend the public session on May 10th and reflect on the opportunity we have to help our children and each other to heal. This includes AISD, but impacts all of us in this community. At this time, we'd like to have trustees report, well, provide committee reports. Trustee Lugo, could you please provide a report for the Audit Committee?
Yes. So, the Audit Committee is an ad hoc committee that has met twice now. We have reviewed five proposals in response to the request for proposals, the RFP that was put out earlier in the year, so that we could procure external assistance with completing audits that are within the purview of the Board of Trustees. Our next step will be to invite a select number of those vendors, of those respondents, to meet with the Audit Committee. And from there, we will bring back to the full board a recommendation for our finalist in hopes that we can execute a final contract after our May voting meeting. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Ashi, could you please provide a report for the Policy Committee?
Yes, I certainly can. Thank you. We met actually just yesterday for the first time with the new makeup of the Policy Committee, which includes trustee Boswell and trustee Foster. And we actually did begin to discuss a few policies that will be coming to the board for a vote. The first policy was BE Local. That has to do with the agenda building, and we will be speaking about that as all nine of us on Saturday during our board retreat. We had minimal discussion on that, as we knew that we wanted to have all nine of us input on that on Saturday, and we look forward to that conversation. The second policy we discussed was CH Local, which has to do with purchasing and acquisition. And they were changes that were brought about in order to keep us more in line with the law. We did ask some questions to make sure that they, it had to do with having electronic submissions for requests for proposals. And we wanted to ensure that even those businesses who may not have the ability to, to put those into an electronic format would still be able to use and, and apply for opportunities to work within AISD for certain contracts. And we were receiving information that that would still be possible. So, I anticipate that that will be coming as well as for a board vote. We did get an update on the Student Code of Conduct, and we have moved that one to our next meeting, and we will be getting a first look at the first draft. This is again another one that we will be bringing to the full board and have some community conversations around as well. The goal is to try to have it approved in August. So, that is where that stands. We brought up a couple of other potential policies for us to examine, and those will be happening at our next meeting, which is on the third Wednesday of the month.
Great. Thank you, trustee Ashi. Do you also have a report for the Austin Education Foundation?
I do, and I'm going to move to it right now so that I can see what I wrote down. Okay. I am the representative, newly appointed representative, on the Austin Ed Fund, and I've met with Michelle Wallace, which is always a joy. And I wanted to provide the following report. That the Austin Ed Fund will be hosting an event open to the community, which President Rodriguez referenced just a moment ago, on May 10th, featuring Dr. Bruce Perry. Dr. Perry is a brain expert specializing in how children are impacted by trauma and will speak to the impact of the events of the last year and the importance of community healing. This virtual event is free and open to the public. And to learn more and register, please visit www.austinedfund.org. The Ed Fund also hosted an event for trustees and Dr. Elizalde's leadership team with Dr. Perry on April 7th, which I personally attended and really appreciated the information that he shared forward and highly recommend anyone who is interested to attend the one on May 10th. It is extremely, extremely informative. Thanks to recent community support for the AISD Crisis Support Fund, the Ed Fund has provided, let me make sure I get that number right, $634,000 in financial assistance to campuses to support families in need. And 260 staff received $500 in financial assistance in response to the winter storms.
Thank you. Trustee Boswell, could you provide a report for the Joint Subcommittee?
Yes, happy to do that. The Joint Subcommittee is a group that includes representatives of Austin ISD, of the city, and of the county. So, it's all of our local governmental entities. It doesn't include other districts that are in our county, but those three, the three largest local governments. And we met this week. The representatives from Austin ISD are President Rodriguez, me, and trustee Lugo. And we met this week to talk about shared, some shared overlapping needs and, and places where the district and the city intersect. One of the needs was talking about childcare. There's some opportunities with childcare funding that has come to the city and the county that we might be able to overlap with. We talked about the city's support for ensuring that our school district gets federal funding that is coming to us through the COVID Relief Acts, and we'll be talking about that more later today. City Council chose to put a resolution forward in support of that and just talked about other opportunities going forward, possible focuses that we could have, including homelessness, some other shared topics of interest that we can talk about going forward. And we will be meeting again to really revise that and consider other ways to partner together on other issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, are there any other committee reports for tonight? And if not, we'll move to our next item, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, thank you. So, for tonight, just want to give a few updates and then a few accolades of my own. Operation Reconnect, as many of you were there and, and helped us. I think this is a nice slide that I think illustrates the excitement around this particular initiative. We had over 195 volunteers. We had over 600 homes visited. We did phone calls. We had direct contact. And then we learned a lot. We learned about folks that have moved or maybe where there was no answer. We also were able to gain information and trends as we visited with our families about what they're needing from our schools, so that if there's something we can do to meet their needs, so that they can choose Austin ISD, that, that's the information that we need. And in fact, there were some general themes on the next slide. One theme that was very common was that of transportation. I think I've raised this before, but once again, want to highlight that the state of Texas only reimburses, rather, the Texas Education Agency only reimburses school districts for transportation outside of a two-mile radius from a school. Now, that doesn't preclude us from providing transportation, but it means the cost is not reimbursable. We have opted to modify our transportation to include inside the two-mile radius. This was done strategically, and more information will follow about which schools and, and how many changes within that two miles. Some are even within a one-mile radius that we made adjustments. I already heard from one of our principals, who's already re-enrolled seven students for this immediate school year and are committed to coming next school year as a result of this. And that just happened to be an organic conversation that I was having. I believe it's Harris School and Principal Gardenas there, so I really appreciate her leadership. There were also general themes about either longer school hours or after-school enrichment-type programs, some of which trustee Boswell alluded to in, in the joint meetings. We want to take more advantage of opportunities to ensure we have activities for students. And we really want to expand those activities to include the arts, athletic-type events, things that are outside of what we would consider the norm, if you will. Also wanted to provide an update on our pre-K enrollment at this time. We are continuing to improve on the number of three-year-olds. We're a little bit, this was actually prepared almost more than a week ago. So, we have had changes to this, but we wanted to give this and keep this in alignment with the items that were also posted for our public to see. But as you can see, we are doing well, and we are continuing to work on improving and increasing the enrollment. And we will see more increases as we have quite a bit of time. It's one of those where we're kind of fast, there's very little time left, but there's enough time left for us to make an impact. So, we're continuing to do so. So, as for accolades that I would like to take the, really the privilege of being able to highlight, we had several events and occurrences in our district over the past few weeks. So, one is our Adelante Conference. Thousands of Austin ISD parents and families participated in the Fourth Annual Adelante Parent Leadership Conference from April 7th through the 9th. Special thanks go to the parent champions of McBee, Walnut Creek, and Rodriguez Elementary Schools, who facilitated sessions on topics including social-emotional learning, or SEL, parent advocacy and leadership, and child brain development. The conference facilitated entirely in Spanish and English interpretation, invites parents and families to take on leadership roles in their schools and model the many ways to be involved in your child's education. Approximately 34,000, 34,000 families participated via Facebook Live, 560 families participated via Zoom, and additional 12,000 have watched the session videos after the event concluded. Thank you to all our families who are so committed to partnering with us in their children's education. On the next slide, I also have the honor of celebrating the inaugural class of Austin's African-American Leadership. On March 22nd, three Austin ISD leaders were selected to the inaugural class of Austin's African-American Leadership Institute. Dr. Tammy Williams Hill, Donita Caldwell, and AISD Police Sergeant Wayne Snead were among 38 Austin professionals selected to network and gain knowledge and history related to the Black experience and trending issues. The African-American Leadership Institute is designed to prepare industry leaders in civic awareness to ultimately enhance the quality of life for Austin's Black citizens. Through the course of the institution, participants will have the opportunity to hear from subject matter experts in issue areas such as technology, environment, healthcare, employment, and education, and of course, politics and public safety, to name just a few. Our next slide, there is a group behind the scenes that we sometimes forget about. So, I wanted to take a moment to celebrate our dispatchers. Last week, the AISD Police Department celebrated National Public Safety Telecommunications Week by showering our dispatchers with gifts and goodies. Our dispatchers relay critical information in real time to officers in the field. The staff work 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to keep our students and staff safe. We set aside one week each year to shine light on their hard work and dedication, so they know how much their behind-the-scenes work is appreciated. This is one of the many groups that assisted so much during our winter storm in helping us coordinate and know where there were needs. Thank you for making us AISD proud. Next slide, I'd like to celebrate Martin Middle School's sixth-grade science class. When a sixth-grade science class comes together to improve their local environment, good things happen. Mr. Stephen Morris and his sixth-grade science class at Martin Middle School won the 2021 Eco Audit Award from EcoRise. Mr. Morris's class received the Eco Audit Award for their project, Reducing Plastic, which reduces the use of plastic water bottles on the campus of Martin Middle School. The funds will allow students to purchase metal water bottles for sixth-grade students to implement their waste campaign to divert 147 pounds of plastic waste from the landfill. And it'll encourage the use of metal water bottles and reduce the carbon footprint on campus by 225 pounds each year. Way to lead the way in sustainability, Martin Middle School. Our next slide is that of Damian Saavedra. Trustees, if your house were on fire, what would be the first thing you would do? Well, our very own Damian Saavedra did not have time to think twice what he would do. Our fifth-grade student from Guerrero Thompson Elementary was the first to call 911 when his apartment complex caught on fire and then knocked on door to door to alert others, potentially saving lives and property by quickly alerting the fire department. For his brave efforts, he was awarded the Community Member Life Saving Award by Austin ISD Police. I was able to join the celebration along with Austin Fire Chief Joel Baker this last Thursday. Thank you, Damian, for your bravery. Next slide. AISD celebrated four teachers who were selected as Austin ISD's 2021 Teacher of the Year finalists in a series of surprise visits on April 14th. Congratulations to our two elementary school finalists, Lisa Richardson of Walnut Creek Elementary and Angie Baca Ross of Jocelyn Elementary. Ms. Richardson is a bilingual second-grade teacher and has been with Austin ISD for five years. She says she became a teacher to end racial disparities in education and hopes to help students who have been historically underserved by schools and help them find their brilliance. Ms. Baca Ross is a bilingual kindergarten teacher who has served the district for four years, making a tremendous impact on her community by showing the value in communication between parents and caregivers. Our middle school finalist, Joseph Allen Sosa, is an eighth-grade science teacher who has been with the district for nine years. In his years at Lamar, the percentage of on-level students who passed the Science Star test almost doubled, and the school earned a Texas Education Agency Distinction of Academic Achievement in Science. Sosa shared a commitment to your students to find what their needs are, learn about them, and do your best to meet those needs, whether it's academic or emotional. It's clear Mr. Sosa has figured out how to do exactly that. Finally, Dr. Sanford James of Eastside Memorial Early College High School was honored as finalist for his outstanding character in the classroom. Dr. James is a health science program coordinator who has been with AISD for eight years. Dr. James got into education because he wanted to help students know that they can contribute to their community, their society, and more importantly, to their own future. These four finalists will proceed through an interview selection committee to determine one district elementary and one district secondary Teacher of the Year. The winners will be honored on May 20th during the annual AISD Salute Awards presentation and will be submitted to move forward for the Texas and will be submitted to move forward for the Texas Teacher of the Year Program. We would not be Austin ISD without the hard work and sacrifices that these educators make daily to provide our students the best education. They are the beating heart of our district and our key to the future success of our children, and we cannot thank them enough. I think we have a little video. Well, good morning, everyone. Today I get to go and announce Teacher of the Year for our district. One of the finalists is your very own Ms. Lisa Richardson.
I was not expecting it at all. This was a complete surprise. I'm very honored, still surprised right now.
We do what we do because we love it so much, and we don't expect any of this in return. So I am really honored to be recognized for something that I love doing so much.
I got into education because I became very excited about learning. And it's not learning from a book, but it's just learning who I am. And I hope that I'm able to convey the same passion of learning to my students.
I'm very glad I don't have to make the selection for the finalists. They are all so very deserving of this award, as I know so many of our teachers are as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Elizalde. The next item under the superintendent's report is a discussion on our scorecards item for college, career, and military readiness outcomes. Dr. Elizalde?
Thank you. In keeping with wanting to keep a focus on our student outcomes, we are selecting another deep dive into Scorecard Goal 3. I'm going to turn this over to our Chief School Leadership Officer, Dr. Anthony Mays.
Good evening, Dr. Elizalde, President Rodriguez, and trustees. And so tonight, we will be sharing an update on Scorecard Goal Number 3. And so we're a prideful group, so we're excited by showing our highlights. But we're also reflective group. So we're also wanting to acknowledge areas of growth and ways that we may better serve all of our students. So with that being said, I'll be passing the baton to our Executive Director of ECHS and PTEC Initiatives, Dr. Kresnman Fannin.
Good evening, Dr. Elizalde, President Rodriguez, and Board of Trustees. My presentation again this evening is on Scorecard Goal 3. All students will graduate college, career, and life-ready. And I'll be referencing the goal progress measures, or GPMs, for 3.1, 3.2, and 3.4. First, you'll see college, career, and military readiness, or CCMR. It's a measure used by TEA to help determine campus and district ratings under the state accountability system. Students can demonstrate college, career, and military readiness by demonstrating any one of the indicators that are listed here. There are about 10 different indicators listed. Several of these indicators have been incorporated into Austin ISD's scorecard. And we're going to provide an update on those measures for you tonight. It's important to note that most of the CCMR measures are what we call lagging indicators. The most recent official results for the district and for the state are for students who graduated in 2019. So in late May, we will receive preliminary results for the 2020 graduates, so that we can provide you with an additional update on the scorecard measures at that time. Our scorecard indicator, GPM 3.1, is based on the percentage of Austin ISD graduates who achieve one or more of the college, career, and military readiness indicators, which are related to military enlistment, enrollment in a post-secondary institution, or completion of a certification in career and technical education. So we talked a little bit about post-secondary enrollment at the April 8th Board Information Session. So this time, we're going to be focusing on just two of those indicators, military enlistment and the completion of industry certifications. We keep our scorecard methodology consistent from year to year so that we can keep track of our progress over time. But, you know, sometimes state accountability rules change, making an Austin ISD and state comparison a little bit difficult. In those cases, we're going to show you our outcomes using our internal scorecard methodology along with another slide where we will show you the Austin ISD and state comparison using the state's methodology. And to tell, and we're also going to tell you why there is a difference. So when we're calculating those outcomes or the scorecard indicator, we're going to include all of the CTE certifications earned in Austin ISD, not just those on the Commissioners' approved list of industry-based certifications. So military enlistment, it's based on a student's stated intention of enlisting in the armed services on the high school exit-level survey. And that information is also entered in by a high school counselor. As we saw on the previous slide, those TEA indicators with the military enlistment, it may not be included as a CCMR measure this year because of the difficulty that we've had in validating this information overall with, as the state of Texas. So our indicator on this outcome for the 2019 graduates was at 77%, just one point below the target of 78% in school year 2020. So across the board, we've seen growth from year to year. We're asking the question and having the dialogue about why we haven't caught up with the state. So with more data digs and looking further into where we're going to take those actionable steps, we're going to be working closer, closer with our partners, and strengthening our coherent sequence with our CTE courses. Our scorecard indicator also for GPM 3.1 disaggregated by high school. Those three schools that you see, there's about three schools here posted gains on this indicator from 2018 to 2019, taking a look at Aitkins, Lhasa, and Northeast. Most of them showed, most of our campuses showed a slight decline. But I also want to make sure that we note that Aitkins and Anderson, Austin, Bowie, Lhasa, and even Ann Richards, they were all above the district target of 78% for the 2019 graduates. So just a connection that we can draw is that we have campuses with a slight decline and some ups and some downs. That says that while we don't have stable systems in place, we also have some campuses that we can learn from. So we're going to take a closer look at Aitkins, for example, and Ann Richards, and we're going to find out what are they doing and how can we actually learn from them? Let's take a look at military enlistment. When we first look at this component of the scorecard indicator, what you'll see is that there are a number of students who have indicated an intent to enroll in the military after graduation, and it's relatively small, just about 106 students in the 2019 graduating class. It is worth noting that TEA is no longer going to include this indicator in the calculation of CCMR for accountability purposes because of the difficulty in verifying that data. So while we see a slight over-representation in Hispanic students and a slight under-representation of white students, those responses have not been validated through an external list, and the information is challenging to verify. It expresses, again, the intent, but not actual enlistment. And as a note, Austin ISD results are based on that high school exit survey with that intent to enroll in the military. And as I stated earlier, TEA shared that it's really been a challenge for them to receive that information from the Department of Defense, and it's not going to be used as an indicator in the 2021 accountability. On the next slide, our scorecard indicator includes all certifications earned in Austin ISD, the TAPER report, which is the Texas Academic Performance Reports, and the state accountability system includes the industry-based certifications from the Commissioners' approved list. So for an example, if we're looking at apples-to-apples on a comparison with the state, we are showing the percentage of students earning an approved industry-based certification on this particular slide. But overall, the percentage of Austin ISD students earning approved industry-based certifications, it is below the state rate, although we see that African-American students are at or above the state average in each of the past three years. So I know you're probably wondering, why are we below the state? So particularly, one reason could actually be that we're below the state in regards to the certification list that I've been mentioning. There was a big jump between 2018 and 2019 graduates because of the certification list. It was expanded. It went from about 72 certifications to about 244 approved certifications. So just as an example and to give you context, we gave our scholars an opportunity to take and pass the Occupational Safety and Health Administration exam, the OSHA exam, and CPR as well. Both of those give our scholars a leg up to be life-ready, but they're not recognized on the Commissioners' approved list. So I'm going to be giving you some more context on the next slide about why we're lower than the state. So taking a look at all certifications earned in Austin ISD, the TAPER and the state accountability system are included in the, only include the industry-based certifications from the Commissioners' approved list. So therefore, the Austin ISD and the state comparison includes only those industry-based certifications. So as I mentioned earlier, this list of approved certifications, there was a significant increase between the graduating class of 2018 and 19. And as a result, most of our high schools, they posted a nice gain in industry-based certifications for 2019 because those programs that were well-established in Austin ISD were new additions to the Commissioners' list. So you'll see about 18%, for example, of our LBJ graduates earned an approved certification in 2019, followed by Aitkins at 15%, and I see Navarro at 13% and looking at Austin at about 12%. So many of those certifications, again, on the TEA industry-based certification list prior to school year 2018, 2019, they came from transportation and architecture and construction clusters. So while Austin ISD had a few programs of studies in this area, these represented a really small selection in those clusters where the, our scholars achieved those certifications. So, and it's really due to the high-tech nature of the city of Austin with our career and technical education focused on certifications that are aligned to local industries. So we're still in the process of strengthening those programs and enhancing those coherent sequences to make sure that they align with our pathways. When we take a look at our GPM 3.2, this is the percentage of annual graduates who meet the criteria for the Texas Success Initiative. And in order to do this, in order to meet the Texas Success Initiative criteria, the TSI for the College, Career, Military Readiness Accountability, those graduates must meet the college-ready criteria on the SAT, the ACT, or on the TSI-A, which is the Texas Success Initiative Assessment. That's what the A stands for. Or successfully complete and earn credit for college preparatory courses in both English-language arts and math. So while our scorecard measure does not include students who completed the college preparatory classes, we have included those students on this particular chart so that we can compare Austin ISD's performance to that of the state. Our goal for 2019 graduates was 62%, and I am excited and want to celebrate that we are at 73%. We are actually higher than what our goal is. The percentage of Austin ISD students who met that TSI criteria in 2019, if you look at it, it's nearly about 30 points higher than the state average for all student groups, and about 9 to 38% points higher for each of those student groups. On the next slide, just want to point out that about 10 of our high schools exceeded the scorecard target, which was at 62% with their 2019 graduating class. And really, it's about making sure that we give all of our scholars, like Dr. Elizalde said, multiple opportunities to prepare, to take, and to pass the TSI exam. It is going to be key for our 8th graders, who will have an opportunity to participate in our upcoming summer bridge and receive that enrichment opportunity that they need to get a jump start for high school. Those TSI scores, they'll last for five years, so taking in an 8th grade will take them all the way through high school. Now taking a look at GPM 3.4. So overall, 90% of our Austin ISD students qualified as distinguished-level graduates in each of the past three years, well above the state average. Each of our student groups exceeded the state average as well. However, we're not projected to achieve our target of 93% for the class of 2020, and there's some different factors there as well. But we'll be waiting on those scores to come later on in about July. Our Texas seniors, they are currently graduating on high school plans implemented for students who actually enter high school in 2014 to 2015 or after that. And so to qualify as a distinguished-level graduate, a student must satisfy the requirements of the Foundation High School Plan and earn a total of four credits in math, and that has to be including Algebra II, four credits in science, and successfully complete the curriculum requirements for at least one endorsement in STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, Business and Industry, Public Service, Arts and Humanities, or even Multidisciplinary Studies. So trustees, seeing I know that you had some questions around the distinguished level of achievement, and we're going to make sure that we provide that information for you as well and can circle back with you for that as well. On our next slide here for GPM 3.4, looking at the class of 2020 distinguished-level of achievement rates that were projected to remain comparable to the prior year in spite of the onset of, you know, the pandemic in the spring of 2020. But here what you'll see is McAllen posted the largest increase in the DLA, the distinguished level of achievement. We see about 4.2 percentage points on the gain. And then we also want to make sure that we note that Eastside posted the biggest decline, and we have some work to do there. And we're going to make sure that we're doing a deeper dive there and doing some digging to talk to them and find out what are some of our campuses doing well, how are they doing that, and how can we learn from that as well? And so over the next few weeks and over the next few months, we're going to be making sure that our coursework at the middle school level is aligned with the programs and certifications at the high school level. So it's really imperative that we have the buy-in of our middle school principals and our staff, our scholars, our parents, so that we can make sure that we're offering those CTE classes for career investigations and the principals-level classes that are on the front end, because that's what's going to give our scholars an opportunity to make better decisions when they're selecting their endorsement. So this is going to give us that heavy lift that we need for the scholars to be successful in high school when they come across those certification exams. There's going to be some additional opportunities to apply to college and complete financial aid coming up this week with our spring, spring action planning and working with financial aid and working with applications. We're going to be joining in with our partners from Austin Community College, as well as working with the Chamber of Commerce with the Fast Track and Career Scholars Programs. But we're very excited to make sure that we are aligning those middle school and high school coursework. I know that some of the trustees I know that some of the trustees have some questions around that. Making sure that all of our scholars are aware of those P-Tech opportunities. Making sure that they are aware of what we're providing and all the great opportunities that we have here in Austin ISD. Thank you.
Dr. Elizade, that concludes our presentation.
Sorry. Thank you, Dr. Mays, Dr. Fannin, and thank you, Dr. Elizade. I was going to ask if trustees have questions and I recognize trustee Anderson.
I mean, y'all must have been reading my mind with this presentation. Like, thank you. Thank you so much. Some comments and requests. How are we connecting students to the opportunities for the industry-based certification? You mentioned getting buy-in from middle school. I've said this before and I'll say it again. I wholeheartedly believe when you're doing this outreach, trying to get buy-in, that needs to start at elementary. By the time you get to middle school, people have already decided, you know, what school they want to do, go to. So I would start at elementary. And as I mentioned, connecting students to opportunities, how are we preparing students for these various industries? For example, I'm going to take cosmetology at Navarro. And when a student walks into cosmetology at Navarro, how are we telling students the various areas they can go to when they're getting into cosmetology? For example, what if I'm really good at doing locks? And I want to be specialized in doing locks? How, what information are we giving that student who wants to specialize in locks? What the earning potential is? You know, what, where can I go work at? So how are we preparing students for that? And so my request actually ties into that. At some point, I would like to see how we are preparing students for these opportunities. I'll take Northeast, for example, automotive and cybersecurity. So how are we connecting students to the opportunities? You know, we have Tesla coming. You know, how are we ensuring or trying to get a partnership so when students get that automotive and they want to go to Tesla or say, "I'm interested in becoming a diesel mechanic", what information am I given to say, "Hey, like, this is the earning potential for a diesel mechanic"? And, you know, maybe at some point, I want to own my own business. Once again, how are we, what information are we giving students when they decide, whether it's, you know, automotive, whatever the case is? What information are we giving to say, "Hey, this is the earning potential? This is where this can go", rather than just, "Here's the course, testing, boom, there you go." So just something to consider. I'm not going to go too deep into it, but I do want to thank those students that are choosing to enlist in the military, come from a military family. So thank you so much for wanting to serve your country. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Anderson.
A part of our response would be, of course, we totally agree with you that these opportunities should start at the elementary age. We actually have been having ongoing meetings of the team just thinking about, what programs can we offer at those elementary schools that are aligned with some of those middle school and high school programs? So that we do have a coherent course sequence from top to bottom and start that exposure at the elementary level. I'm happy to say Dr. Fannin met with Tesla last week. And we actually agree with you all about making sure that those industry opportunities are awaiting our students and that they are aware of opportunities and what wages they can be looking forward to. And so that is a heavy lift. We do have ongoing meetings with our chamber and Mr. Gilbert Zavala to try to make sure that we can become aware of those opportunities. And we're always on the lookout. I think you mentioned cosmetology. I think Dr. Elizade was sharing, she just brought a new possible industry partner to us the other day in cosmetology that we're working to connect with one of our high schools. Because we want to make sure that they have all those opportunities readily available right in front of them and that they're fully aware of the steps that they can take thereafter.
So you, just, I'm going to throw this out real quick and I'll be done. You talked about elementary and figuring out how to, you know, get the students interested or whatever the case is. I'm almost sure they probably still do this, but at some point, you know, when they do centers, when they send the kids off to centers, there's an opportunity right there. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions? Trustee Singh.
Thank you all so much for this excellent presentation. I feel like I know so much more about what we're doing with CCMR and what the outcomes are. I was really happy to see some of the results on here, as I'm sure y'all were as well. Particularly, the slide that showed our, well, one I was really excited about was Slide 8, which showed that our students and every single student group exceeded the state in terms of how they scored on the Texas Success Initiative test or the SAT or ACT in math and English Language Arts, which I thought, like, kudos to our teachers, man. Like, they are definitely working really hard and I'm just so proud of our students. I mean, you look at this, I just want to, like, point out a couple of these statistics. For African-American students in AISD, 50% of them tested above, passed, let's just use that word, passed these tests compared to 30% at the state level. For Hispanic students in the district, I think it was 66% in AISD versus 37% at the state level. For special education, it was 21% in our district versus 7% at the state level. For economically disadvantaged, 60% in AISD versus 33%. And it goes on and on. Even for English language learners, I mean, there's a huge difference. So I'm interpreting this correctly, right? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So yay. And so, like, you see that, and it's like, okay, so our students, I mean, we still have gaps between student groups. I know we're working on that. I'm happy to see we're doing above the state average on these. What was a little curious to me was, okay, so if our students are academically prepared more than the state, why are we below the state? I'm thinking back to our presentation two weeks ago when we looked at the college-going rate and it looked like our students were not going, were not enrolling in college at, as high rates as one would think based on their academic preparation. So I, you know, would be curious to just kind of hear what the administration thinks about that and what you'd like to share with us on that.
Sure. I'll start with something and then if the team members want to add something, of course, they're welcome. Because we just had this conversation, actually, earlier today. And we pulled back our slides from two weeks ago. And so there are two things we want to acknowledge. So first, thank you for praising our teachers, our support staff, our leaders, our students, our families for what we do see is improvement over time and being above the state average. So that's our praise. And then the next thing we have to go to is what I call now our probing. So what do we need to probe at that we know we need to look at? So what we're recognizing is two things. One, the data, it's in some instances difficult to compare because the National Clearinghouse data that we showed last time puts us way above the state because it includes out-of-state and private college enrollment. But if we compare just with Texas data, that's where we look like we're at or below the state in terms of enrollment. What we do know is, we do see that there is a continual opportunity gap between students who are clearly demonstrating that they are college-ready and are not actually enrolling in college. So that is a system of support on our part. That's our probing that we need to polish. So what do the systems look like? How do we ensure that everything from a FAFSA form to knowing that, "I need to apply to at least five colleges", "There needs to be two that are in-state", "One needs to be public", "What kind of financial aid am I going to get based on"? So those types of counseling opportunities, we have, we have staff available to do that. We have not seen evidence that we've actually provided the support to ensure that schools create systems throughout where it's, are we all going to be doing that by grade level? Are we going to have a senior counselor who's going to work on that? Are there additional partners that we're not leveraging to the extent that we can with regard to ensuring as we work on? We know the FAFSA or the other four individuals who may not necessarily be citizens. That is a major hurdle, but it's so doable if we provide the support. It is amazing how many of our student surveys come back that say they didn't go to college because they didn't think it was affordable. That's still the number-one reason students think they can't go to college. That's on us. We've got to do a better job of recognizing how it is attainable and how to help them. So we don't have a, this is the solution. We're sharing your question, your probing, and we're going to work to develop that. We'll be happy, as we continue to focus on student outcomes, we want to bring you progress measures where we demonstrate, so here's what that system of support now looks like so that we can better serve our students and begin to match. We obviously want to still improve our college readiness, but we want to be able to demonstrate that they either enrolled in college or that they went into an industry because they had an industry certification. So we're working to align those pieces.
I appreciate that. When I looked at the college readiness as, you know, determined by SAT, ACT, and TSI scores in today's presentation and compare that to the percentage enrolled in college based on the National Student Clearinghouse from two weeks ago, I found an interesting finding that I wanted to share, which was 50% of our African-American students, this was so cool. I was like, okay, 50% of our African-American students scored college-ready. So academically, they're there. 52% of our students enrolled in college, y'all. I was not expecting that. So did I interpret that correctly?
She must have been in the room when we were having the conversation.
So. I was really. Yeah, and so there's something magical happening, I think, with our counseling, which trustee Anderson maybe was kind of alluding to. It's like, what are we doing when we're telling our kids about the post-secondary options? So kudos to whoever's, you know, working with our students on that.
If I could add just something, because it's also a place to highlight My Brother's Keeper. Those are the types of partnerships and mentoring that we know are also impacting those kinds of results. And that's what we want to continue. We have so many folks who want to help us with that. We need to organize so that we can leverage them. It's not a matter of, do we have help? It's, how do we help? They're saying to us, "Help us, help you." So we know that, but we have evidence of how that helps our students in just enormous ways. So we want to continue leveraging that.
I think it's huge. So, and then interestingly, so African-Americans seem to have, like, the highest sort of return, like, the highest proportion going to college that were college-ready. White students and Asian students also did pretty well. There were, there was a bigger gap with Hispanic students economically disadvantaged, which is, you know, not shocking. And due to, you know, the cost and English language learners. So to me, that, the way I interpret that in my mind is when we're thinking about the budget that we're going to be approving in June is I hope to see some connection between this data and like, where our investments are going to be. Are we going to be putting more money into college counseling and that type of thing? Some of the stuff trustee Anderson was talking about as well, starting in elementary school and starting earlier to kind of get our Hispanic economically disadvantaged families and ELL families thinking about, hey, if you're academically ready, here are all the things that we can do to support you to take that next step, whether it's an industry certification or college or whatever. So I am so happy. I was just, like, having fun with all of this. I really appreciate y'all doing this work. I had a couple, one or two other little questions, I think. I would be curious to see. So, looking at the industry-based certifications, it looks like the state average is 11% for all students. If I look at Slide 6. Correct, y'all? Okay. So I wanted to just kind of give a shout-out to some of our high schools that are actually above the state average on industry-based certifications. I think LBJ leads the pack. It's not really competition between schools or anything, but I just wanted to recognize LBJ, Aikens, Austin High, and Navarro all actually seem to exceed the state average in industry-based certifications. So I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. I was a little curious, I do see a dip in one of the high schools. So I would love to kind of hear, maybe in a board update or at some point, you know, why there is a dip there.
Eastside?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Mays or Dr. Fannin, do you want to address what you all discovered with regard to Eastside on this one indication?
Yes. With regard to Eastside, trustee Singh, what we discovered was that we had a particular teacher there that was CNA certified. That's the Certified Nurses Assistance. And that teacher actually left the district. And so what we have to own is that we didn't, you know, plan for how we're going to continue on to make sure that our scholars get what they need. And so we're going to be looking into that student sharing and making sure that if there is another teacher, another opportunity for our scholars to continue on and make sure that those certifications are there and available, we're going to be doing all that we can to make sure that that happens. But also putting some plans in place to make sure that we can continue on with that. So student sharing is really important, you know, to making sure that process continues as well. And then I also wanted to share, you mentioned about affordability and the finances, keeping our scholars once that they become college-ready, keeping them from actually enrolling into college. We're going to be working with our partners that we have here in the district. I've been meeting with our Breakthrough, meeting with API with Dr. Kathy Jones, meeting with Education is Freedom, Advised Texas with UT, making sure that all the wraparound services are there. We have a unique opportunity with Gear Up that is working with our cohort from the class of 2023. And that's definitely going to help us to make sure that we're putting some systemic pieces in place to make sure that the work that we're doing, it can continue. And I think it's important that we share with our families a list of those universities that offer the tuition assistance based upon income. Because we do know that finances is one of the biggest barriers to enrolling into colleges. So we're going to be providing that information and making sure that we post that on the website and getting out into the community to share that information.
That's great to hear. I really appreciate that explanation. It just kind of shows like how one teacher, one effective teacher can make such a difference in our data. So yeah, I think that's really, really helpful to know. But I think those are all my questions. Just want to, just again, appreciate y'all dealing with all my questions and I'm doing such a great job putting this data together. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Trustee Foster and then trustee Boswell.
So I want to, again, I think this is about the third meeting in a row where I've offered this gratitude, but I want to offer it again. I love the presentation of student outcome data and I love the disaggregation. You can dive into this and really learn a lot about what's going on. And it's valuable for the public to know that these presentations live in perpetuity, or at least for as long as we know. as we know, on our board website. So, you can go click through to this meeting, find this presentation, and go back and look at these data. And I love that transparency, even as I, we have to acknowledge, we get to see the good and the things we need to work on. All that said, and this is going to sound a little impolitic, but I want to frame it correctly. If we go back to the work of the educational anthropologist Jean Anion and her work on social class and school knowledge, one of the things she talked about in her work was the reality that we, through our schooling, which is supposed to be the great equalizer, it becomes the great stabilizer for social class as opposed to the great equalizer. And what she specifically talked to was the way that we choose to offer different programming to essentially different class, economic classes of students. And there are arguments to be made for that at different points, and this is actually what we've embraced in the district where we have early college high schools in one space, and then we have more AP offerings and such in another space. So, that's the road we've chosen. We're on it. Within that, then, we darn sure need to ensure success within the early college high school space, and there's tremendous room for growth in this, in that if we have an early college high school, and I think we can talk about the TSI and the mere eligibility to participate in the programs that'll lead to the associate's degree, participate in the career and tech ed, participate in PTEC. If you don't pass a TSI, if I understand correctly, you are not going to be available of that opportunity. So, our TSA pass rate becomes really, really important, and right now, it's too low to ever ensure full success of the early college high school because we don't have enough kids that can get in. So, there's work to do, and what I loved from Dr. Fannin's presentation was I was hearing the attempt, the emerging attempt at alignment from what's being offered at the middle school, how you're counseling, making sure kids pass the test, having them set up to roll into early college high school, ready to embrace a pathway for themselves. So, I love that. I applaud that. I want to see that, I hope to see that continuing and would partner in any way possible to facilitate that. As we go into these numbers, I just, for, I guess for my own clarity, is it possible to pull up Slide 9, which is Scorecard Indicator GPM 3.2 by campus? And just to understand these data, I can look at two schools, Eastside and Navarro, that evidence what appears to be, if I'm reading this correctly, a dramatic increase that goes from below our district goal to above our district goal. But then, if I look at the ends, the actual number of students we're talking about, we're talking about less students. So, for instance, Eastside goes from an N of 139, but then we see an N of 104, and that represents somehow an increase. And I know the answer to why this is, but can Dr. Fannin talk about that and actually the flip side of how this might be an indicator of something we need to work on?
Yes, I can definitely speak on to that, Trustee Foster. When we look at what probably contributed to this increase at Navarro, we're looking at the class of 2019 where they had a lot of their students, probably all of them, there's a great number there that took this TSI exam. So, it really comes down to the increase in the test takers. And so, actually, I have, Carolyn is here, Carolyn Henshaw is here for accountability, and she has some more information that she can share with you as well.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Elizalde, President Rodriguez. The Ns on the chart on 9, in fact, the Ns on all of the campus-level data is the denominator. That's the number of students in the annual graduating class. So, that 104, we're talking about 64% of 104 students. So, that's about 65 students achieving that indicator in the case of, let's see, on Eastside, the one that you mentioned earlier, and the 23 would be 23% of the 131 students in the annual graduating class for that school. So, roughly 30 to 35 students in that case. As far as the number of, it is a big increase for the class of 2019, and I'm not sure if they were taking more advantage of the option of using the Texas Success Initiative Assessment at their campus. That's one area where we've seen a lot of growth, that they can take that test on demand instead of waiting for an SAT or ACT test that's only administered a couple times a year. But we'll have to look in-depth at that campus to get a better answer for you on that.
So, I'm sorry, so the N of 104, say on Eastside in 2019, or the N of 139, that's the denominator, that's not the numerator?
Correct.
That's correct. That's the number of annual graduates.
Got it. So, I was already, so, thank you.
But you're, I think where you were going is still in alignment, which is why, if you will allow me, that is why I asked for Ns. Because when we first got our slides produced, they had percentages. And again, working to be transparent, percentages can mask what's actually happening. So, our team was gracious enough and went back and put in Ns on these, because what we have to recognize is, yes, we want to celebrate that we did a much better job, great job of meeting that criteria. However, you have to ask ourselves, what happened that our graduating class declined from the previous year? And so, if we leave that out, we don't give you the whole picture.
That's, that's exactly where, thank you. That's exactly where I was hoping to go. So, again, but all this bears out that we get to get into it and understand what's going on because of y'all's willingness to get into the data and share the data with the public. And I loved, didn't love, the concrete indicator of how teachers matter. And so, when you got into your data and you said, "Oh, my gosh, how did we evidence a substantial dip in one space?" And it boiled all the way down to an excellent teacher that we lost. That tells us so much, A, about the value of the teachers, but it also tells us how now we can act. We now evermore know how important every individual teacher is, and so, we can spend time on retention efforts. We can spend time on the PD of the teachers who aren't, you know, up to par yet, et cetera. So, I just want to both applaud us or you all for the data dive, but also, boy, just push and push and push, because on the early college high school side, we have so much work to do on the number of kids with associate's degrees, the number of kids who emerge industry-certified, and then how, and then the full elaboration and success of our PTEC. So, again, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Foster, and I would say President Rodriguez may be able to help us with that particular teacher. It is difficult to attract nurses and medical specialists over to education, and so, he may know someone in this field that may be wanting to come over, but having had a couple of those pathways on my campus as a high school principal, the pool would be very shallow as you look for, you know, industry professionals that had that medical experience that were interested in contributing over into education. And when we do find them, like you said, our Trustee Foster, we're fortunate, and we're lucky, and we have to make sure that we retain those individuals.
My chief nursing officer might get mad, but we might know a couple thousand of them. We might be able to ask for one. Trustee Boswell?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate such a look in so many different ways at this, really valuable information. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. The first is, I just want to give credit to people long before me who decided to opt students into the distinguished graduation plan here. It's a huge bright spot for Austin ISD, far above the state data, and a real assumption that most students are capable of the more rigorous program and that high expectations for all students. So, I really appreciate that being our choice and a statement of values as a district to the people who made that choice. And it really makes me think, Dr. Elizalde, about our last meeting when you talked about looking at perhaps opting students into eighth-grade algebra, just the power of that, of programs that automate things. Perhaps we screen everyone for GT, perhaps we, you know, what, what opportunities are there to automate those high expectations for families? So, thank you for that. I think that's just a really, it's exciting to see that choice was made, and it's really paying off. My second comment is just to Dr. Mays and Dr. Fannin, hearing you talk about connecting internship opportunities, you know, kind of practicum opportunities with the certifications that are happening. At the joint subcommittee meeting that we mentioned earlier, workforce was one of the things we're looking at. I would love to see just a list of all the certifications we're offering and all the options that, to take back to that meeting and make sure that we're really thinking as a whole community about those opportunities. So, thank you for that. And that connects to one of my questions, which is, how are students and families informed about this whole spectrum of what is there? I mean, I consider myself a relatively well-informed person. My kids have, you know, entered, and one is, my younger is about to graduate from high school, and I know a lot of the programs, but I have no idea the full richness that's offered, and I don't think I've ever seen it all in one place. And as a tool to attract families back for high school, when we can offer things that other places can't, and is just that tool for options to help everyone figure out what those paths are, I would love to know kind of where we can find that or whether we can create that.
So, I'll start, and then Dr. Fannin will pick up. We have to do a better job, and Dr. Fannin has been hard at work on that marketing and sharing piece. That's been something that we've been pushing to make sure we get in place before the close of this school year, because we want families to be familiar with our opportunities. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fannin, so she can go a little deeper into that, but that's something that we know we have, an area that we know we need to make improvements in. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mays. Yes, we're actually making sure that that information is widely known to our constituents. We're making sure that our websites are up to date. We actually just did a revamp to make sure that our early college programs have that information posted there, and we can share that link with you so that you can go specifically to that page where it talks about school choice. We have our early college high school information there. It talks about receiving those Associate of Arts degrees in general studies. We also have the TSTEM information there of how you can become a part of that model and what it entails. But then also, we added a page, a landing page for our PTEC programs for the pathways specifically, listing each one of those out, and there's a drop-down there for each of those campuses and for those pathways, sharing how you get there to those industry-based certifications. It really boils down to if you know exactly what you want to be when you grow up, making sure that there's that pathway and that it's succinct there for you to really do a deep dive and make sure that you have an opportunity to get there, and you know how that is going to happen. So, we've listed those on our website, but we're also going to be working with our marketing department to make sure that we have the door hangers, that we have social media, that we have the newspaper going out to the churches and different organizations out in the community. We have to do our part to go and get our students and welcome them home.
That's exciting. Thank you. I look forward to exploring that website and learning more about what I don't know about yet. So, two more quick questions. One is, do we do any kind of ceremony or recognition for students graduating with these certifications, for students entering the military? We talked about, you know, really celebrating those other paths. Are we doing that in a public way?
Yes. There is actually a CTE ceremony where they're going to be doing somewhat of a signing day, similar to what you'll see with athletics, the National Signing Day. There's a CTE signing day that is happening in conjunction with Austin Community College. So, I will make sure that we share that information with you all and that invitation as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Fannin. And then, my final question is, that gap between the percentage of distinguished-level graduates and the TSI criteria, and there's a really big gap. We're obviously preparing students well enough to graduate and graduate with that more ambitious degree, but there's still a gap in, in students who appear to be prepared. And I heard one thing that might account for some of it, that it's, it seems to be optional maybe for students to take that. So, there may be some students who might be prepared who we're not capturing, but also, does that tell us something, especially when we get down to campus-level data or some of the other disaggregated data by race, by other criteria, that we're preparing students well? We have high graduation rates, we have this ambitious plan, but some students are less prepared than others, and what are we missing? And what resources might we need to make sure we fix that?
I think Dr. Fannin has helped me along this path during our conversation as well. The first thing is, we do need to examine, it's the area of probing, because we need to ask more questions to properly problem-solve and support where those differences are. One is an evaluation of the programmatic offering. So, what is the alignment of the curriculum itself, and how aligned is it to college-preparedness or certificate or industry-certified level of thinking and problem-solving? Secondly, is how have we helped our students? Sometimes, you're going to do really well, and you really do need a portion of your day, a portion of a week, to help you prepare for what some of these assessments are, like many folks do as an SAT prep or, you know, people prep for a law, a law exam, prep to get into a law school and so on. And so, what we have recognized is, we have been waiting longer for students to take some of these assessments, and we can do that earlier on so they can also be more aware of what's going to be expected on this, on these exams. There's no penalty for taking it multiple times, but we need to give them enough ramp of time to have those opportunities. So, those I know are two areas that Dr. Fannin is working with our schools on. Did I leave something out, Dr. Fannin?
No, that's exactly right. You shared that you wanted to make sure that we had given our scholars multiple opportunities, starting as early as possible, to make sure that we prepare them, that they actually take both of the exams and that they have an opportunity to pass it as well, and not leaving anyone behind. So, what, what has typically happened is that, once a student takes the TSI exam, if they're not successful, sometimes we kind of just move on and we keep working with those who have already passed, but we forget about those who may have been one or two points off from passing or just needed a little bit of extra help. Maybe they had a little bit of test anxiety, or maybe it was just a long day, and taking that exam is a really long, long day with a lot of questions. So, we have to give them multiple opportunities to do so, and there's a way that you can make sure that you do that, starting in the eighth grade, like I said, with that jumpstart. But then, coming back, after we do our first set of summer bridge in June, we need to come back in July and in August and reassess and make sure that we have another group of students who are ready to prepare, to test, and to take. Because one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is that we prepare them first. It's not a good idea to have them just go in and take that test cold turkey. They have to prep for it, and that's what our summer bridge is all about, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ashi?
Thank you. I just have one question, and I think, Dr. Elizalde, it's probably more for you, and it's kind of high-level, really looking at it from above. So, I'm going to ask this question a little bit from a position of ignorance in that I am not a school counselor, and so, I don't know exactly what all of the job expectations are and what that looks like, but I feel like from the conversation that I've heard that there is a lot of specialized information that has to do with things that you start learning, in my opinion, along with Trustee Anderson from elementary school and on. And so, trying to kind of figure out, is there a, a position or a space, are our counselors able to take this on already from what I know that we have SEC? able to take this on already from what I know that we have SEL focus and we have scheduling focuses and we have all of these other pieces? Is, or is this a space of, and what I think used to be in my mind, I'm thinking like a college counselor, but would it be more like a CCMR counselor, somebody who's, who is that specialized person? And I'm really kind of asking from like an overall and in full understanding of the financial position that AISD is in specifically. So just trying to kind of figure all of this out in my head, as it were. And I don't even know if it's something that's fully answerable tonight, but just kind of trying to figure out where maybe the vision is of where we're wanting to go as we're trying to make impactful choices, both with budgeting and other things moving forward.
I think this is a perfect example. Your question leads to the differences between firm and flexible. So there has to be flexibility in how a principal utilizes their counselors, but we have to be firm that they have to fit within a certain set of parameters. And so, and it requires us to also make sure we're providing support. So we have, through the budget processing and staffing, counselors were not affected in terms of, even though there was a decline in enrollment, please note that counselors were not a group of individuals that we touched at all. In fact, because we kept all of those positions, we actually have lowered the number of students to counselor ratio because enrollment lowered, but we kept all the positions. And that's because we need them all. There are a lot of things expected with regard to high school students in particular, albeit it starts from elementary. And what is the connectivity between relevance in what we're teaching, not just the content itself, but its connectivity? So there's a lot for teachers to do in ways in which they can connect to industry starting in, you know, pre-K and kinder and so on. So we are going to not want to jump into, here's the solution. We want to really identify and probe because it may be different from campus to campus. I think your observation, question, comment is certainly one we share and we're, we know we have a sense of urgency, but we also know we have to be cautious in terms of not rushing in and putting in something in place that we haven't really worked with our team members because at the end of the day, we really need to engage our own counselors and our own teachers and our own principals in the design of what is it going to take for us to be more successful with students? We know we're successful, but how can we be more successful? And so, no, I don't have an immediate answer for you, but it is certainly one that we are probing and continuing to work on so that we can tailor and provide the support and the services needed to ensure that whether at a campus they are going to actually take their high school students and divide them alphabetically so that all counselors have the same number of students, but they want to lower that number, that ratio, or whether it's they're going to be by grade level or whether they're going to be by a particular content area. I think the biggest issue we have to recognize is, the challenge is how to integrate rather than keep these as isolated pieces. It's a little, it's a little challenging, if you will, if you can follow this for a minute, you know, to have a social emotional counselor separate from my academic counselor. It may sound good in a, on a paper, but we don't organize as human beings. I want to be able to go connect with one person and talk through, here are my academic needs. And in fact, the social emotional component, as we stated in our beliefs, is the foundation to academic learning. So it's more about this great stuff that we have, how do we begin to desilo it and actually make it become a part of how we operate so that we can in fact meet all of these types of needs? Does that make any sense at all?
It does. I feel like I hear where you're, where, I feel like I hear a direction from you with our counselors and their, what we're wanting to help them and support them in the accomplishment with our students. I would love to continue to have this conversation and figure out more of what that looks like. Again, just in the interest of educating myself, that would, I would be of interest in that. So thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Trustee Sapata?
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Mays. I think one of the things you mentioned, it's important to increase is the internships. Not just internships where they, their students are able to practice and learn more about their dream job and what they really see, the importance of the value of work and their education and how that may move them to go on to higher education through that internship experience. But many of our students, and I know in my district, many of our students are low income. And so it's going to be so important that we try to build those relationships with existing relationships in the API and with the chambers, that they be paid internships. A lot of our students need that, need the resources, number one. And number two, it will keep them from dropping out of that internship program because there is no funds with it and then they'll go work in the evenings and late hours. So it's just something that I know that is going to be very important to help our students stay in school and pursuing their dream job. Thank you.
Trustees, any other?
Thank you, Trustees Sapata.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we started this conversation about 6:29. We're going to finish it at 7:29 and it's an hour of talking about student outcomes. And I just want to share just a few reflections, if you will. One is I really appreciate, Dr. Elizalde, Dr. Fannin, Dr. Mays, the amount of responsibility and accountability you're taking for this particular issue because it's so important to our kids and their future and the transparency about what's needed. And as you were saying, Dr. Sapata, the integration and the expectation, I think, from the board of how this aligns to our budget discussions as well. And lastly, I just want to remind all of us, we have been talking exactly about what this board has talked about for almost a year now, bringing the strategic framework forward. Our mission to prepare every single student with the knowledge and skills to thrive in college career in life and the vision of this school district around high expectations for all children, high outcomes for every student. We're definitely not there, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And I really appreciate the discernment around alignment to the mission, vision and values of the organization, as I think some of the trustees also mentioned. So with that, we're going to close this particular part of the meeting and we're going to move to the public testimony for items on consent agenda. In order to accommodate our video conference format, members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting and audio recorded their remarks. We will now play those recordings, so please listen carefully. I believe we have two speakers tonight.
I'm having a brief technical issue.
Hi, I'm Barbara Spears Corbett, LC Anderson alumni, class of 1970, calling regarding Agenda Item 12.4, naming of the modernized Eastside Campus. The original LC Anderson alumni supports the proposed name of Eastside Early College High School for their new facility on the LC Anderson Campus, 900 Thompson Street. More importantly, the continued recognition of this historical site as the LC Anderson Campus, named to be prominently displayed on marquee signage and throughout the facility where appropriate. The alumni and the community are confident that the logistics for creating the marquee signage will be worked out and amenable to all parties. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Angela Peers and I'm parent at AISD and I'd like to comment on Agenda Item 12.1. Good evening Superintendent Elizalde, Trustees. I would like to comment on contracts for security cameras using funds from the 2017 bond and to tie it with a letter from the Superintendent regarding their Chauvin verdict. While I appreciate the district making a statement about justice for George Floyd, I would like to remind that what happened was not justice, it was accountability. We have to keep fighting for justice so that we don't have to expose children to the trauma for recording a video of a person being killed. Unfortunately, the killing and policing of Black and Brown people has been normalized in our society and part of that normalization is having police officers, security cameras and all the policing apparatuses in schools. As you well know, the use of disciplinary actions and the involvement of police officers in schools disproportionately affect Black and Brown students and students with disabilities. That's why we're providing justice to our students while we're thinking and abolishing police and policing in schools and put the money where our mouths are. Thank you for consideration.
Trustees, this concludes public testimony. Are there any questions or clarifications? If, Trustee Elizalde?
I'd just like to thank the original LC Anderson alumni for staying so involved and engaged in this process and Ms. Corbett for, Ms. Spears Corbett for what she and so many people have done.
Thank you. Trustees, if there are no more questions or clarifications, as a reminder to our community, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austisd.org. We're now going to move to consent, to the consent agenda. I'd like to remove Item 3.1 to allow myself to abstain from that vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustees, are there any additional consent agenda items that anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? Secretary Sane, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I have, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 9.1 through 12.4 and Item 13.2.
And Trustee Sapata seconds that. Before we move to the discussion on consent items, I'd like to ask Trustee Boswell if she could provide an overview of Item 10.4, the resolution for federal ESER funding. Trustee Boswell, could you share a few words on this resolution and then read the resolution into the record?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. This resolution involves federal COVID relief funding. We, President Rodriguez gave an update about it a couple of meetings ago, I think at our last voting meeting, and then wrote a letter to the governor about it, has an op-ed in The Statesman today in conjunction with other regional school board presidents. And this is, there were three federal COVID relief acts, one a year ago in March, one in December and the American Rescue Plan that just passed this past March. These are the same pieces of legislation that have gotten checks to families, that offered the paycheck protection program, that has helped local businesses and the people who work for them. It has gotten extended unemployment benefits for people. It has gotten money to our local governments, to our city government, to other entities in recognition that there are needs at the individual level, at the business level, at the governmental level that we need more funds for. This is a crisis and these are funds to help everyone weather this crisis. Each of those plans also included funds for K through 12 education and higher education. Forty-four states are currently, at least 44 states are currently getting that money to their districts, to their schools. Congress intended the money to flow directly to school districts with the understanding that school districts know their needs best and are best prepared to use those funds to make an impact, to address their local needs. Congress has given clear guidance on what those funds can be used for. It is for things like improving ventilation, offering mental health services for students who will be returning to school with trauma and mental health needs, for offering programs that will help students address gaps in their learning that have come this past year, for after-school programs and summer programs that will help kids become strong academically, emotionally, socially, and that provide a workforce benefit. Texas chose, the first round of funding was $1.3 billion for Texas. Texas chose to use that funding to balance its budget. They passed $1.3 billion to schools and retained $1.3 billion in federal funding. So as Mr. Gregonis spoke to during our last meeting, the net was zero. Seventeen point nine billion dollars remain, that's billion with a B, for Texas schools, including Austin ISD. Austin ISD stands to get about 240 million of that. There is a, an idea of what Austin ISD, what the needs are. We have spent about 55 million on direct COVID costs and the needs will go up next year. The needs will not go away. So regionally in the Austin metro area, we're talking about more than 540 million dollars and statewide 17.9 billion. And these are money, this is money that comes directly to benefit our students and then flows through our schools to benefit our communities and our state's recovery. It is a piece of the recovery plan just as much as the paycheck protection program, just as much as the checks that have come to individual families and individuals. That is what this resolution is about and districts around the state are passing similar resolutions and communities are coming together to speak up for this. So I will read this now. Austin Independent School District Board Resolution Regarding ESER Funds Allocated to Austin ISD. ESER funds are the education piece of these acts. April 22, 2021. Whereas the federal government has allocated CARES Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ESER 2 and 3 funds to Texas. Whereas the state of Texas has received these funding allocation amounts that are intended to supplement the needs of Texas school districts as they support the unfinished learning during the pandemic and social emotional needs of the students we serve. Whereas local education agencies in over 40 states have already received their allocations and planning amounts and Texas has not allocated these funds to local education agencies to allow for planning and budgeting to address unfinished learning for the children of Texas. Whereas the district is extending the school day to include additional time for both academic instruction and enrichment programs, using strategic staffing methods to redesign current staffing models, increased wraparound services for students including counseling, mental health and social and emotional supports, providing additional professional learning and coaching to support teachers as they accelerate and personalize instruction. Whereas the needs of Texas's schools and its children are of paramount concern to both the people of Texas and the long-term economic and cultural aspects of both the future of our state and our nation. Whereas Texas will only continue to maintain its cultural strengths and economic edge with a high-quality workforce and educated citizenry through a continued statewide commitment to quality public education for all. Whereas the legislation declares that each state shall make allocations to local educational agencies in an expedited and timely manner. Whereas there has been a delay of the allocation of these funds and the initial discussions indicating these funds could supplant funds already designated for districts rather than supplementing the funds local education agencies should already receive and are entitled to for the purpose of addressing unfinished learning. Whereas there is discussion about how the Texas Education Agency may add additional requirements above and beyond the federal guidelines related to allowable partners and technical assistance programs. and technical assistance providers with which local education agencies can utilize these funds. Whereas local government is more efficient, effective, and responsive to its constituents, yet state government and regulators continue to erode the traditional local controls of Texas public school districts to the detriment of Texas students, teachers, administrators, parents, taxpayers, board members, and local school districts statewide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District respectfully asks and recommends that Governor Greg Abbott, the Texas Legislature, and the Texas Education Agency ensure all supplemental funds allocated from the federal government flow directly to local education agencies without additional restrictions beyond what the federal government has stipulated. The Texas Education Agency utilized these funds to supplement funding to school districts. The Texas Education Agency does not supplant and provide these funds in place of funds already due to districts through the Foundation School Program and Available School Fund. The Texas Education Agency not attach additional restrictions and extended their control in place of local control on how these funds can best be utilized in districts across the state with such diversity. Approve this 22nd day of April 2021 by the Austin Independent School District Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any questions? If not, if not, I'd also, at this time, like to recognize trustee Lugo regarding item 12.4, the naming of the new modernized Eastside campus. Trustee Lugo.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. I have a comment and a another comment for consideration. So as we know, the LC Anderson alumni were very, as trustee Boswell also mentioned, were very participatory in the process of building and modernizing the new Eastside campus that will be at the LC Anderson campus site. And likewise, the Johnston High School alumni are very interested and invested in working with our school district to preserve their own memories from Johnston High School. And I understand, you know, the the naming of the new set, new modernized Eastside campus is in part retiring the Albert Sidney Johnston name, but my understanding is that retiring of that name does not mean retiring of the Johnston High School alumni or the history of those students who graduated from that campus. And I'm not sure if Dr. Lysalde would be able to answer this because I know a lot of it happened before you came on board. But is my understanding correct that the Johnston High School alumni would still have an opportunity to to work with the district on the renaming process once Lysalde comes over?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, trustee Lugo. As a matter of fact, today I was on a phone call with Mr. Almato of the Johnston Alumni, and we are setting up a liaison with our district as we move and make preparation for the relocation of our Liberal Arts and Science Academy. And so we want them as involved as we were, as we think the LC Anderson alumni served as a model, and we want to continue to work on that. So we absolutely, he will be hearing from us with the the direct person who he can reach out to. Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, trustee Lugo. I would now like to recognize trustee Anderson, who is the trustee for the new modernized Eastside campus at the new location, to share any comments on the same item.
As the trustee for District 1, I want to share the excitement of so many Austinites for a comprehensive high school to be returning to the LC Anderson campus. The district and Eastside Memorial Community worked hand-in-hand with the LC Anderson alumni to ensure this is both a world-class building for students and also a community space that recognizes the historical significance of the LC Anderson campus. Anderson served East Austin and African Amer- and the African-American community for over 80 years before it was closed as a part of a desegregation order. With the return of Eastside to the building next year, the campus reopens as an important asset for this community. I am proud to support the recommendation of Eastside Early College High School for the new campus. I also appreciate the campus community, neighborhood communities, and LC Anderson alumni working together to agree that LC Anderson will continue to be honored by using the full name of Eastside Early College High School at the LC Anderson campus on the marquee building, website, and other prominent locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, is there any discussions on any other consent agenda items? If not, having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Zapata to approve consent agenda item 9.1 through 12.4 and 13.2, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes by all those on the dais. We will now move to those items pulled from the agenda. The first item, I think the only item is agenda 13.1. Trustee Singh, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move we approve item 13.1, 2022 Health Plans.
There are second. Trustees, are there any questions or comments on item 13.1? Having a motion by trustee Singh and a second by trustee Anderson to approve agenda item 13.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining. So the motion passes 801, showing trustee Rodriguez abstaining. So we will now move to the items for separate vote, and tonight we have one item for separate vote. Trustee Singh, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move we approve item 15.1, interlocal agreement with the University of Texas at Austin for 2021 UT prep summer program.
There are second. Trustees, is there any discussion on these items? Having a motion by secretary Singh and a second by trustee Zapata to approve agenda item 15.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining. So the motion passes 801, showing trustee Foster abstaining. So we will now recess the open meeting at 7:45 PM and move to the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. And so for the purposes of this meeting, the board will now leave this meeting and convene in a private meeting. As we will adjourn immediately following the executive session, this ends tonight's broadcast on AISD TV. We want to thank you for your patience.